I have a call meeting in order, Judy can take the role. Meeting number two, oath of office for the new board. Are you ready to do this?
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna, we're just gonna stand up, I'm gonna read this. Shake your hand and hand me a flag.
Thank you.
What are you gonna use as a background?
Whatever you like. That's what we usually use, so that's great.
Okay. So right hand up. I, Curtis Giffman.
I, Kurt Giffman.
Hereby declare under oath.
Hereby declare under oath.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of a board member.
The duties of a board member.
Of Cherokee public schools.
Of Cherokee public schools.
District IO forty-six.
District IO forty-six.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties pertaining.
All of the duties pertaining.
To set office and obey.
To set office and obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and Oklahoma.
Of the United States and Oklahoma.
Congratulations. Vote on reorganization of the board members. Any motions to change if the way things are? We need a, we never did get a vice president, correct?
Yeah, we have, yes.
Oh yeah, we did that. So we have members for all.
All positions.
Anybody have any recommendations, changes?
I recommend that we keep it as is.
Does somebody?
I second that recommendation.
I don't know. Is that something? Yeah. So Shane made a motion, Curtis second, to keep it the same. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Lowhigh?
Yes.
Number four, approval of a consent agenda at A through K. Guys have any questions? Need some time to go over anything?
We have, the SCCLA is asking for permission to travel to National Commission of Leadership. It's not until July, but she does start doing some fundraising and things like that. So she goes in and gets her request in, plus her job rankings and things like that. So that is, I believe that's an early, uh, put it on the request. I did wanna mention that you can see in our, um, our finance summary that this was our month to get our local, uh, money from the accountants. So our balances did get back on the, on a good swing there. Uh, we will be watching it, monitoring it, just to make sure that all the uncontrollable things that you can't handle, that can't really help out, but, uh, as far as like, uh, cash balances, we're back to where we are at this time.
Any other questions or comments, A through K? If you want time, it's fine too. When you're ready. You're ready? Somebody made a motion, second?
Second.
Amber, second?
Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Lowhigh?
Yes.
Agenda number five, discussion and possible vote to approve the partnership with the City of Cherokee to provide a full-time campus resource officer for the 2021 school year.
Um, I've asked Mike, who's our city manager, to be here tonight. I attended his meeting last month and wanted him to kinda come and, uh, give you his perspective on the benefits of this officer. Uh, I think that, um, today was a prime example for us of why an officer is really needed on campus, uh, for just daily deterrence. We, we did have our, um, uh, drug dog come today and there were things that the drug dog found that perhaps kids get complacent in thinking nothing is, you know, going to happen, but when you, when you see an officer every day, not only does it promote, uh, security, but it also promotes, don't do that. You know what I'm saying? Don't bring things you shouldn't bring, don't, don't, um, challenge what you think is what the, what you think is a norm, don't do that. So, um, I, uh, I know that there's been a lot of publicity lately over, uh, the Enid officer and the things that they have done. I do wanna say that one of the things that Mike and I discussed with, uh, his board was that we're a completely different community. We're very, very, much smaller. Um, I, I believe that they're, they have their own office, uh, police force on campus. Am I correct on that, Mike? And I believe that the communication that's with Mike and myself and with Jeremy and with, uh, that we're gonna be able to make sure that we are both on the same page about how we want things handled, how things should be, where, who they go to, those kind of things. So, um, I'm gonna just kinda turn that over to Mike just a little bit and, um, let him kinda tell you, I guess, his part of this.
Thank you for the opportunity to come. I have, uh, spent seventeen years of my career in the criminal justice field and I've seen how important a school resource officer is. Coming back to Cherokee, um, I told our council that it would be something that's important to me, that I want to go forward. This, these officers, um, this will probably be the best police officer that we have, or the most valuable police officer we have, is nothing happens in town that the kids don't know. And if you put an officer in a school, um, that the, the idea is we send them, we send this officer to their school, um, so they teach in elementary, first through fifth grade, they establish that, that relationship with these kids, but, um, as they go into junior high and high school, although there's, there's not a dare program, these officers are gonna be available, they're gonna be in the hallway, they're gonna be there to talk to them. And, um, this individual officer is going to be able to solve so many problems before they're ever a problem. They're gonna hear about, um, rumors or they're gonna, they're gonna hear about stuff that happens at home and so they're gonna be able to do an investigation. This is gonna make the city safer. Um, I, I had a little bit of a hard time, uh, convincing my council that it was a good idea. They, they, um, there were some people that, that didn't necessarily agree with it's, uh, the city's responsibility to put an officer in the school. And, and I would argue that, and I did argue that. Twenty-five years ago, there were six police officers for the City of Cherokee. We had twenty-four seven police doors. Today I have three full-time police officers. The, the financing just isn't there to have, um, the police that we used to. And I have two reserve officers and they help, but we, we can't provide twenty-four seven service, but Monday through Friday, um, during the day, a majority of our population is right here and they're the most precious of our population. And it's important to me to be able to provide that security. Under this agreement, um, this officer would belong to the city. The, the, the city, uh, would be responsible for hiring them and firing them and discipling them. The school would pay the city a determined amount, um, we're guessing somewhere around twenty thousand dollars would be half of what the salary and benefit package would be. And the city would, there would be an employee of the city, um, half of the year while school is in, is in session, they would work here, they would, they would, um, report, um, they would be in close contact with, with Donna, the admin, as, as the administration. Um, their, their schedule would be, uh, really flexible based on the needs of the school district, um, but primarily they would, they would have a responsibility to the elementary skid, kids in the morning for a dare, and then in the afternoon, be in the hallways, uh, at the junior high and high school, but also have a flexible schedule, so if there's, there's a school event, um, that uniformed officer will be here. So if there's, you know, if there's games, they might have a flex schedule where they come in at, you know, one to nine or something like that. But this, this, this partnership, this will allow us to put somebody here and, um, have a, have a uniformed officer, um, to, to, to not only protect these kids, but to be there and, and help guide and counsel these kids, if you will. My past experience where I've seen this happen, it's almost like an older brother or an older sister. I came from, uh, when I was a, a police officer, we worked at a much larger district and so there were several SROs throughout our jurisdiction. But they, uh, they really form a close bond with these kids. Now, it, it outlays, uh, you know, we've laid out the, the roles and the responsibilities and, um, what this, what this officer isn't is someone who, instead of going to the principal's office, they're gonna go to the police off, you know, go to the SRO's office. We're not gonna take away from the discipline, we don't wanna take away from the discipline of the school. This officer is to, um, be an instructor, be a mentor, and, um, be reactive in case there is a crime that's committed in our presence. Do you guys have any questions? Questions of me?
Would you be here anytime school's in session, then? Is that kind of the idea?
Well, um, I think that it would be unfair to ask the officer to, you know, to work an eighteen-hour day if they had to be here the first one here and then if there's an event late at night, you know what I mean?
Right.
Uh, yeah, it, uh, while school's in session, an eight-hour day while school's in session. So this twenty thousand dollars, uh, will take care of half of the salary and the idea is the school's in session approximately half of the year, so the other half when school's not in session, they'll be working our students, they'll be helping, um, they'll be helping the city in the busiest time of the year. Um, this is, for me, it's a win-win because it allows me to have another police officer and, and I only have to pay half of the salary. Um, and, um, so it's a huge benefit for the city, but I've, I've seen firsthand the, the benefits that it does to a school system and, um, we, we, we had some incidents late last year, we had some more early this year. Things like this could probably be avoided before they ever happen because the officer will be there, um, you know, it, it takes two or three years for that report to really be established where they can trust it. One thing I'd like to make clear is we're not trying to, to hire somebody to hire somebody. This is gonna be a unique position. If I can't find somebody that, that I think is going to fit this, uh, this mold, what we need, we're not gonna hire somebody. But with your permission, we'll, you know, Donna and I will work further and, um, I'll go to hire somebody. My goal is to, to hire somebody by May because there were some critical schools that happened, uh, that happened for police officers in the summertime. That way they'll be ready to go, um, by the school year. So, um, with this partnership, we will, uh, we will start posting, if it's agreed upon, we will start posting shortly thereafter and try to find this officer as soon as we can so we can get them to adequate training. I learned today that there's a, some really good training that happens at the end of April. I don't know if we'll be able to get them to that or not, just depends on, um, if you guys approve it and how long it takes us to find that perfect quality.
Is this a one-year contract or is this something we'll have to renew annually?
The city council approved it for one year and they'll revisit. Uh, so it would be a one-year contract. I don't see. I don't see a situation where it wouldn't continue. I would hope that it would continue because I don't think in one year you can really establish those relationships that you could after being there three or four years. You know, by the time, you know, that this officer, he's teaching third and fourth graders, by the time they're in ninth or tenth grade, he's gonna be like their big brother, big sister, their best friend, and they're gonna rely on this officer for so many things. And so it's gonna take several years where it really, um, to, to unfold and to show the full benefit. I'm convinced that I can show the, my council how this is a good program and I believe that they're gonna continue, but, um, the truth is, is they appeared, they, they approved it on a one-year period.
I can tell you that in, and, that throughout my, um, careers as an administrator, I have had the opportunity to have a resource officer and then I've had situations like my first superintendent's job where we were thirty miles away from the sheriff's office for any kind of help, which is in itself very scary. But we've had, just in the last week, two separate incidents where a resource officer would have been the person in charge of that and been able to, um, that's, and like Mike said, maybe cut it off at the pass, you know, maybe prevent some of that. Um, the, the biggest example that comes to mind, I shared this at the city council meeting, was, uh, I was the high school principal and there was a note on the bus that was found that was one of those hit lists, like this person's getting it, this person's getting, you know, just down the line who was going to be the recipient of not good things the next day. I called our resource officer, he got with the police department the next day, there was, uh, somebody on that bus, there were people in the school, you know, we were able to quickly take care of something that could have become not such a great situation. So, um, the benefits of having a resource officer definitely are justified in twenty thousand dollars. So I, I've not ever had a situation where I was unhappy that we had a resource officer.
Would he be wearing the same uniform as the Rutherford's office at least, uh, at all the, the year?
There, uh, there's advantages and disadvantages to everything and it wouldn't be fair if I didn't explain the disadvantages. So the disadvantage for our small community is I'm gonna hire this person to be a school resource officer. If it doesn't work, Donna and I are gonna have to sit down and either decide, are we gonna terminate, are we gonna write it out for a year and try to find somebody else? We don't have a big enough department where I can pull somebody out and put somebody back in, if you will. Um, so, so that is gonna be a disadvantage, but, but I'm confident of Donna and I's relationship and working together and, and trying to, um, fix problems if there is a problem personnel-wise with this officer, but, but if not, it would be the decision, um, of Donna and I to, do we separate employment and try to start over or do we, you know what I mean? So that, that's the, that's the downside of a small town in Cherokee. My other officers are not gonna be trained with the SROs, who are just, they're, um, I don't believe my current staff is the right fit for the school, if you will, because it's a new job.
And that, I did you hit the nail on the head. If, all the success of the program depends upon the person that hired, is that person makes it or breaks it and, um, I think if there's somebody out there and, uh, breaks it down.
And we spent a lot of money on our, updating our security system and, and, uh, it's relatively cheap.
And I'm not sure, there's some grant money on there and, um, there's possibility that maybe I could use some of our federal funding, I'm not sure, I'd have to look at it. So I think that it could be easily covered within what we already have, not an additional twenty thousand dollars.
Time to look at it as another just really awesome benefit that we'd be giving to those teachers.
Yes, it's peace of mind. Also, there's things that, like, right now, we're, uh, I'm kind of in the middle of the process of doing the, um, nine-one-one, uh, and it would, it would be really helpful for me to have that resource so that I could figure out how to get everybody's phones in our school downloaded with the app that they can, um, immediately get to the police department and say, there's an intruder in my room, those kind of things, but, uh, with my limited knowledge of what's going on, it's just taking me a little longer to learn it. So there's a lot of, a lot of process.
Kevin, from the other side of the monitor? Uh, you know, I'm gonna encourage you guys to take time to read this, you know, if you don't feel comfortable voting on it tonight, uh, read this information and if this information needs to be corrected or changed, that's fine. Um, I don't want anybody to do something that they don't feel comfortable with, uh, but we tried really hard to come up with these, uh, the officer agreement and the job description. We took five different ones and we kinda compiled them all to make it, uh, benefit what, what Cherokee is. And then, and then I sent it to Donna and then she made some changes, uh, recommended some changes that were made, if you will. And so, um, we want to find what works best for everybody because it's, it, it needs to be a win-win for everybody and I don't, don't, I don't want anybody to do something that I'm comfortable with, but.
And this is a draft, right? I mean, we'll be making changes if we pass it to...
Yeah, if you, if you wanna table it, tell me something, that's fine, and take this home and look at it. Um, uh, like Mike said, he's, uh, worked hard to get the agreement and then sent it to me. I kinda looked at it and I said, can you just change some wording here and there? We did that and, and so it, what it does is it, um, the wording now works for the school and it works for the, the city and, uh, but as I said, you know, if you, if you'd like to come and...
The disadvantage of, of, of taking it home and waiting a whole other month is if you do make changes, then I have to go to a council meeting to make changes and, um, uh, I mean, we really would need a couple of months to hire somebody to, to, so, um, the longer, I mean, I don't wanna discourage anybody from taking the time that you need, I just, the reality of the situation of working the two governments, just, I just take that as a consideration.
Well, I think just the fact that it's a draft, um, and we can make changes as is, I'm comfortable making a motion. Unless anybody else has any questions? Is that correct? I mean, you can make changes as is, I mean...
I think that that's probably a document that would be similar to what our policies are and if our, if they're, if the policy's not working, we can bring it back to the table and we, and that's something that'll be done yearly anyway, in a year, the review of this, uh, person and then also of the policies that we have in place. Well, this didn't work, let's change it to fit the needs of the city or the needs of the school. So if, if they're, and you know, you never know until you live through something for a year, what you're, if you're gonna need to change or not change. So the answer is yes, we can change that. And I'll just, if there's something that doesn't work, I'll just go back and Mike, Mike will go back to his community and...
If this is approved, um, we would take off draft if it would be to sign it. I can't hire somebody without the agreement between the two governments. So it would be a signed document if we needed to change it halfway through the year. We could do that through the process, but, uh, it would take the agreement of both parties to do that.
It's a lot more time consuming than just us approving something because we are reliant on the city also.
You don't have any concerns on anything?
I, I don't. Um, any concerns I might have had, which were...
You worked it out?
Yeah.
I've got a motion on the table.
Well, I know Grant said it was a school with a few different issues and a lot of things here, but there was two people, officers, that were, they were invaluable, you know, kids that wanted to be raised, I think that's a lot of it, it's why people develop a report every time there were kids and, um, they were invaluable, a number of them.
So I made a motion. Shane, second.
Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Lowhigh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Let me get you to sign that in the remarks.
Well, I'll take the draft off and then we'll...
You?
Yeah, we'll...
Okay.
Number six, discussion on the current lease with American Tower, possibly vote to change or not change the agreement with American Tower?
Um, American Tower contacted me earlier, I think it was kinda last year about this timeline, came to you and they said, so this year I'm coming to you and I, and, um, I'll kinda pick one and, oh, that looks fine, pick one, let's down. The, the agreement that we're talking about is for the cellular tower, it's right up here. Um, currently Pioneer is, um, just couldn't focus on the line, I'm gonna get on my own there. Uh, Pioneer, uh, leases that tower from American Tower. So we are kind of the, we get, we deal with American Tower and American Tower deals with Pioneer. So when the original agreement happened in, I believe it was twenty thirteen, let's see. There's, yeah, the original agreement was in December of thirteen. They wanted a, um, a ten-year agreement with the school and then when that ten-year agreement was, has expired, which would be in twenty-three, they wanted an additional four, five-year extensions. Now at any time, if either party's not happy, they can, you know, say, I don't wanna do this, it would be, um, a little more difficult for them to just pull out this because they, they are contracted for the money part. So they call every year and they, they present an offer. Well, this offer, this time, is. We, it, a little background, they still owe us twenty-two years of, um, payment. And twenty-two years at five hundred dollars a month is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So what they want to offer is, um, we can stay, that's not their offer, we stay where we are at a hundred and thirty-two thousand, that, that's the choice. The second offer they have is to take, um, a thousand twenty-four dollars for ten years, but at the end of that ten years, they want a perpetual easement agreement. And perpetual easement agreement means they own it forever, they don't pay us until we die. The third option is to take an eighty-five thousand dollar one-time payout and low rent for twenty-two years and they would still have a perpetual easement. I have been back and forth with him, probably with thirty emails, and I said, I will never recommend to this board that they accept an offer that's a perpetual easement. If you would like to come back and offer us the a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which is actually sixteen years of what they owe us, they owe us twenty-two, and then at ten years you'd like to renegotiate and we'll go from there, okay? But he doesn't wanna do that. So what I'm going to say is, I don't, first of all, I don't think that it's legal anyway, and I've got, Andy hasn't got back with me, for us to give a perpetual easement on taxpayer property. It's not ours to do that with, that it don't, the taxpayers own that property, not, not the board, not the superintendent, the taxpayers. So it's really not legal for us to basically give away some of that work, okay? So then, um, Pioneer leases the tower from American Tower. So I called Pioneer and I said, would you just lease, that's our land, let them take their little tower, you put your own up and we'll just cut the middle end out and we'll deal with you. And he said that they have lease agreements with American Tower that prohibit them from doing that. So, but what the Pioneer did tell me was that American Tower is going up on their rates so much that bigger carriers like AT&T, Verizon, uh, which has just merged with T-Mobile, which is gonna become a huge entity, they're moving away from American Tower and they're building their own towers. So what could happen is that American Tower comes back to us and says, there's no business there, there's nobody on your tower, we can't pay you anymore. I personally don't think that's gonna happen with Pioneer because Pioneer's not as big as the companies that we're talking about. I'm not gonna say it would never happen, I'm just saying that I would feel a little more worried if it was AT&T that was renting that tower or leasing that tower. So, um, I'm still waiting on the opinion from the attorney about the perpetual lease, but I'm almost positive I'm correct about being able to spell that. but I'm almost positive I'm correct about being able to spell that correctly.
We may not want whatever AT&amp;T's gonna hang on that in the future, right next to the school.
Sorry. Exactly.
Just for now, we have 22 years, $500 a month, and it's our land at the end of 20 years.
So, my only question to you all is, I cannot in good conscience recommend any of these options. But would you like to counter? Would you like to say, our counter offer is what I've said at 10 years? Uh, we will never do a perpetual easement, but we will do the payout for 16 years for $1,000 a month. And then at 10 years, we'll renegotiate this contract with you for whatever the going rate is at that time. Or, we can stay with the 20, 22 years at $500.
And if they come back to us every year anyway, I'd just say, leave it.
That's perfectly fine with me. I just told him that I would bring him to the board, but if he wasn't willing to take the perpetual easement up there, I could almost guarantee him that there would be no change because we can't, we're not going to do that.
Any recommendations?
I don't think we change.
Say what?
I don't think we change.
I don't have a motion?
I'm just motioning, maintain where we are at and not change the agreement with American Tower.
You was made a motion, I mean, stay the course?
Second.
Does there a second? Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Number seven, principal's reports.
Jeremy is going to be giving you two reports tonight. A remediation report and a dropout report that we give every year. I just didn't get it in print on the agenda, but did something to do it.
The council board?
Hey? Every year, this is something the board regents ask that, basically that I bring to board. Everyone's got to take it to the local school board, just letting them see, uh, where they are, right off two years. They're always, well, that's over. They're always way behind on their data. So, you'll see that 16, 17, and 17, 18 school years. Basically, that's just showing you the seniors in those two classes. Yeah, those are all 16, 17. Thank you, sir.
Did you get it back on the page?
So, basically, our accreditation officer, it's something that they look for to say that we brought the trailer board to approve, uh, the remediation rates. So, what this is, is in 16, 17, and 17, 18, these are the students that we sent to college in Oklahoma. It's not the total number of students we have. For example, in 16, 17, it says we sent 18 to college. We had 30 in that class. So, that just means that not all those students went to college that year. In the 17, or the, the other one, we had 11 students.
This is the same one?
No, it's the same one.
Which one you guys know?
So, I'm sorry. It's the same one. Okay, so in 16, 17, we had, we showed 18 students went to college out of the possible. We had, I looked up, we had 30 seniors that year. In 17, 18, we had 21 seniors and we had 11 that went to, to college in Oklahoma. And basically, the higher the number is of freshman students that it shows on the left, probably the more likely you are going to have remediation rates. But, for example, in 16, 17, we had three in English, one in math, four in reading. And the next year we went, we had three in math and one in reading. All that's telling you is we have some students that took remedial courses and they went to college. For whatever reason, their math skill wasn't up to the level maybe they thought it should, the colleges said it should be. Or a reading or English skill. And it's something we're constantly working on improving. Uh, it's not anything that I have feelings Anderson, or I feel concerned about with the staff that we have. We're constantly trying to make more rigor. Mrs. Jordan's constantly pushing students to take upper-level classes, even as seniors, uh, you know, seniors, sometimes kids want to just take...
Is that based on ACT scores or is that based on some kind of certain test, you know, they do? I think they did a test when they enrolled. Is it all based on ACT or...
If the ACT score is too low, then they, they can take a test after college to see if they...
Where they're at to dial it in.
Yeah, and, and if the ACT, that's what they have to do. And if they don't test what kind of there, then they have to take a remedial class.
And basically, they just have to take a class that they can credit for, but they have to just take it to show they're, they're ready to go to college. And I think we, we've really got the right people in places, as I said, with our teachers. And then also, Mrs. Jordan constantly pushing those kids to take, you know, we've got kids that, you know, she's like, senior year, they're, she's saying, well, you're gonna take trig. And they're going, I don't take trig. And she's like, no, you need to take trig. Or chemistry or whatever. So, we're really, it's not anything I'm concerned about. It's just something, again, that we, we have to present every year. The data, it's frustrating because I contact them constantly and even though it, guys on the board regents, so... But, I'm constantly, you know, data that's two years old isn't always, it's, it's hard to look at old data when you're doing forums, so... The other thing I have to, is, uh, they used to have an annual dropout report. And the state department has so many reports now that they have basically gone away with just the specific dropout report. It's now included in a comprehensive exit report that we have to do. So, anyway, there's nothing that I have to show that, as far as on paper. We will not have any dropouts this year. We have a student possibly, hopefully, I talked to our accreditation officer today, that will hopefully enroll somewhere and we won't have to count them as a dropout. But, and this year we will not have any, next year we could possibly have one if this student doesn't show up. Which basically means, when we have a student leave here, if they don't enroll in another school or a certified online school, then we have to count them as a dropout. So, that's, that's sometimes hard on us because for whatever reason, they move somewhere, they don't go to school, or mom, mom and dad say, well, I'm in a homeschool. Well, they never do, or it's not accredited. What the state department feels is something up to the rigor that we've been having, so... That can hurt us at times when kids just leave and we don't know where they go. We don't ever, we don't ever get a record request. So, that, that will be a ways off, but for this year, we do not have them. But anyway, that's, those are just kind of things that we have to present to you guys so you can see what's going on.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, specifically for, uh, just as far as the calendar. Mr. Paris was having some success, excuse me, we've won a couple of pitch and debate contests as he continues to go on for regionals later in the spring. We had our final basketball game on, official final basketball game on Monday. And we played Burlington last night, that was senior night. We are fortunate to get to host districts on Friday and Saturday here, 6:30, 8 o'clock. And the girls will play on Friday at 6:30, the boys got a bye. So, then we'll play at 8:00 PM on Saturday. So, that's good, we'll have some people coming to town and spending money and all those great things. SCCLA week is this week, so Mrs. Getch is really busy, they're doing a lot of different things. FFA week is next week. And then, hoping we make it to regionals, regional basketball will be next weekend at Shattuck. Also have, the local show is on Sunday on February 23rd here. That's obviously just the Cherokee kids. And then on the 24th through the 26th of February, we have the county show, which is us, Timberlake, and Burlington. For the most part, that covers, I wanted to, we were all holding our breath the other day. We scheduled six basketball games. And Mike gets to the back from Miss Anderson and says, "We've got a water problem, a water break. So, we're gonna have to shut the water off." So, we're panicking. We've got Palm Creek here, we've got six games, we're thinking what's gonna happen. So, Miss Anderson panicked and we're in here, we're all talking, trying to figure it out. Well, within maybe an hour, or whatever, the city had fixed the line, got it up, saved us. Saved us from having bathrooms and concessions. Anyway, I wanted to be sure to thank Mike and all the crew at the city for doing that so quickly, for helping us.
Or Mike, probably heard that in my voice. Look, we've got a bunch full of beakles. He's like, oh, I forgot. He's like, what time are they opening? So, thank you very much, I appreciate the hard work you guys did that day too. Uh, Mr. Shaw?
I've got a few things that they'll entry that...
What, just one second?
I have one question for, for them. A resource officer could never act these days as a truancy officer, is that correct? I mean, if kids, he just said, if a kid doesn't show up and then, and doesn't go to another school, we have to pay for that? Is that what you said? I mean, as far as...
Well, you mean pay, we get punished, is that what you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, is there any way that...
It can happen.
I mean...
I think if all of the kids break the law, or the...
Or just not filling up for school. I mean, if we have, if we have a police officer or, you know, a resource officer, can we check the situation out to, you know, this kid's not going to school? Do you have a view on that or is there any, any grounds there at all?
The idea is for them to stop crimes in progress. Obviously, we care about the well-being of this child, but if they don't enroll somewhere else, anywhere outside the community, we're not gonna go investigate that, that's where we believe they're living.
But I think that there, there have been times where the resource officer has done a wellness check. You know, just to, just to drive by and say, hey, how are you doing, what's going on? We actually have somebody on staff that takes, keeps up with absenteeism with kids, how many days have been gone. But as far as like, if they leave and we don't know where they go, we take that as a dropout. And we also have to take 10 days of absences before, before we can stop it. We have to take 10 days, which is part of that report card now. So, there's a lot of, um, things we can't control that affect our reporting. But as far as the officer goes, the officer could do a, just to check on where they are, just not, you know... But we also can do that through, um, counseling.
Bryce, Bryce P. for that, he's been, you know, a lot of that truancy, simple evidence, district attorney and...
And she's the most, so I could, but the district attorney's office, when they take them there. I usually get to take care of them pretty quickly, other than those times like we've talked about that kids leave and we don't know where they're at for several days, we don't get a record request from another school, so... If there's four non-excuse absences, I think it's a four-week period and we turn those over for truancy issues. We usually get pretty good results. The CVA's been contacted.
We've been busy in the classroom of the elementary, elementary basketball that we're with. And fifth grade went to Oakland City last week with Miss Mitchell. And they're transferring teachers to Colonial A and they've had the whitenest part of law. Now, they're back here thinking about how they're gonna have their own Colonial A, Cherokee for the community. So, they did learn a lot with that. We've got, uh, FFA's gonna do a petting zoo for the elementary school during FFA week next week. Our actual daycares, Jeff put them on every week. Next week, they're gonna go to the dentist office, because dental health, um... PTA's having their mother-son maybe night on February 22nd. The daddy-daughter dance on February 29th. Third and fourth grade, basketball rep teams are gonna play a little Timberlake tournament on 18th and 24th.
Thanks, Ruth. So, continuous report number eight?
Not, not too long ago, Amber got ahold of me and said, you know, um, would you look into maybe getting some handicap doors for the outside where the button is pushed and the door's open for people who need access? And so, what I have done is, I've only looked at one. I've looked, and so, I was gonna come to you guys tonight and, um, kind of visit about what your ideas about that might be. This one is down at the, um, library. And it is kind of a standalone system, but, um, she was telling me kind of the pros and cons of it. Batteries as opposed to plug-in and those kind of things. But, uh, let me kind of just show you what that is on the outside of the building. There's just a little box there, people push the button and then the door opens. So, um, my, my question is, is that what we, is that what we need? Do we need something, um, more in-depth? Do we just need something that just opens the door? I know all of you guys have parents, grandparents, and they come to the gangs. Maybe I thought, maybe you could maybe tell me what some of the issues are besides not being able to get the concession stand, which I understand. But are there, what, what prompted the student, the tier student?
Yeah, it's something I've always thought we needed, that, I kind of, in my mind, I guess I just kind of assumed that we'd take, try to take care of it when we could do an outside, you know, attachment elevator to the concession. But, you know, that could be years down the road and, um, this would be an easy, easy measure to fix.
Um, I think what I'll do then, unless you guys have any, any other ideas, is what I'll, I'll do is I'll get with like, Cedar Ridge contractor who's gonna put in our scoreboard. And I'll ask him to look into this and see what, what would be the cost, what would be the best ideas to do this? And see if he can bring that back to us and kind of let us look at it and see if it's something that we would want to go ahead and just put this small portion in instead of, you know, I know that a lot of times you wait on a big bond issue to do a lot of big remodel, and then when the big one comes to do some of those things. But one of the things, reasons I know that we don't have to have this, because our building is so old that if we were to redo anything, they would make us come up to code with that. But since we're, we haven't really done anything that's been major, we did the roof, but it didn't affect the downstairs part, then we're still kind of grandfathered in on whatever the rules were in 1984. So, it's not a bad idea at all. Fire marshal's never said anything about it. Once in a blue moon, you get a large compliance report you have to do. And you have to fill out things like, do you have the handicap things here and this? And I haven't had to do one since I'm sure, probably, since I've been at Cherokee. But, um, those are things that they kind of point out when they do come and look for your, see if you're in compliance with those laws. So, um, all right, if, if nobody has any, if you guys have another idea of how to accomplish this, then if not, I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of pursue kind of what they have at the law there.
Any other new business?
Uh, no, I have all, two or more, something, something.
Yeah, do we have, um, I came back for a new business, I'm sorry. I got home, I realized that you guys would probably like an update on the water line project that we're doing.
Yeah, we'll take it.
As you know, this school burned down in 84 and our water lines today are actually worse than they were in 84. And we're certainly haven't done anything to fix it. We just put the bid out, went out last week, and we, um, we know that...
And we're going to do a 12-inch line. We're going to connect to the two mains that go down Grand, it's going to come down Sixth Street, on the north side of Sixth Street. It's going to hit here at Massachusetts, it's going to feed that fire hydrant and it's going to come over here to Fifth Street and hit this fire hydrant. That project is costing the school, or costing the city approximately 165,000 or 1,500,000. That's, we were hoping that that would take these hydrants to an ISO, an ISO is how many gallons per minute over a, over a three-hour period for this school because the junior high doesn't have a sprinkler system in it. The school takes just over 3,000 gallons per minute, and I think it's 3,100 gallons per minute. We can't facilitate that, but that hydrant up there now is less than 400. And so the reality of the situation, the school caught on fire, the city can't provide the water. And we have a plan in place for, for fire departments to shut water and whatnot. Mathematically, when this project is done, if everything is as the, as the computer program says it will, this fire hydrant will be at about 1,100 gallons per minute for a three-hour period. Something that, that I know it's really expensive, but if the school were able to put sprinkler systems in the north end, it would drop your ISO in half. It would be about 1,500 gallons per minute, 1,000 to 1,600 gallons per minute. The only way for us to get to that over 3,000 is to build a new water tower. And a water tower somewhere back here would cost between 700,000 and $200 million, which the city can't, can't afford right now. But we can almost triple what we're giving you in water. And in my plan, we're doing a master water plan to help us with our water lines, but if possible, my plan, if there's not a big need, a bigger need, my plan is then to take that water line around to the elementary school so that the elementary school will have that kind of pressure as well. What I would recommend to you is if your water meter is right out front here, I would pay a little bit of money to tap into the new water line because that would put the entire school on the, on the better water pressure. And so fire departments could hook up, hook up to any, no, fire departments, fire trucks could hook up to it and inspire production on the outside of the school. And it would give them the pressure like it would at that height. So it's just something to think about. My goal is that construction is done by June, but I'm having so many problems with contractors, it's unreal. But I just want you guys to know that we're trying to get you the water that we need, that you need, and then we're going to extend that over to the elementary school because we know that you guys are down here there. The plan to the elementary school, it'd just be to go down and we'll put a hydrant on the north side of the elementary school, right there south toward the sports complex. It's right there on that side of the road. And then if you guys want to connect to it, that would, that would leave it up to you. But it's going to be a 12-inch line. And as we, the city charity has so many four-inch lines and they have so many lines that are broken, as we fix those, the water pressure is going to increase, it's going to go up and it's going to get better. But initially, we do need water and so we're doing what we can. So do you guys have any questions about water lines or the infrastructure coming to the city or anything?
What kind of cost? Any idea what cost it to try and utilize these systems?
Not a lot, because we already have, so I don't know what it's going to look like, but you already tie into that line. There's a line that goes along this street, or goes along Massachusetts, it's just not very good and it's not, I don't know if there's a leak somewhere upstream in the line or what the problem is, but both of these hydrants are getting hardly any pressure and actually all these houses here are not getting very good pressure. And so this, we're taking, there's an eight inch on both sides of Grand, they go down Grand and we're, we're going to tie into the two eight-inch lines and that's going to be a 12-inch line. So we're trying to get the biggest line as we can so we have as much water flow as we can get. If you're able to go from your, where your existing water line, where your, where your connection is to the current water line and go on to that, that would, that wouldn't be very, very expensive. If you have to bore under the road and redo an entire line and that's more money. I don't know how you're tied into the main, unfortunately. As we dig it up and we put it in, that we'll be able to look at that.
You guys have mapping of all the infrastructure ideas?
We have mapping, but it's not accurate, unfortunately. It's, it's pretty bad. And that's why we've paid this, this engineering company, they're going to go through and sewn all our lines and reevaluate our lines, of course, because what we currently have is not accurate. And so although I want to put a line to the school, I might have another line somewhere else that it's got a huge hole in it and it's just going underground. You know what I mean? Like I don't, don't know my problems that are underground. I know that there's a lot, but.
Start doing.
We're, we're doing what we can to get you water.
Appreciate that the city's focused, you know, on the importance of water.
Oh, yeah. The school is very important to the welfare of the city and we want to provide you the best service we can.
Thanks, man.
Just so you know, that's, I sunk out, it's been an online call for us. So we did put a suppression system in down in the north end. Also, that's why we are changing our windows and we're adding doors so that there is better access for kids to get out in the event that there's a fire down there. I have not ever actually looked at the sprinkler system because we're kind of this way with it, but I would, I don't have a problem looking at it and see what the cost would be. As far as hooking up with the lines, absolutely. I think Mike and I even talked about like, you know, I'm not really sure what happens underneath the school. Schools are so notorious for patchwork and, you know, let's do it on our own and that, and you know, kind of like what you're saying, it's not accurate. But I really am excited about the changing of the pipeline, pipes that they're doing because if I understand correctly, there's kind of a coating on the inside that will maybe catch particles of what's in the water and make the water a better quality water.
When you're doing that, our.
Okay, let's try that.
It's a zinc ortho phosphate that we put it in the lines and a lot of our lines are old metal lines, it just coats the outside of the lines. So basically with the RO system, we strip, we strip it down to its, easy terminology to understand, strip it down naked, we take all the metals out of it, the water doesn't like to be naked, so it pulls if anything it can, and as it's going to these metal pipes, it's pulled onto this metal and so when the end user gets it, although we give really good water, the end user gets water from the metals. And so we're putting this zinc ortho phosphate to coat the lines so that the water never touches the bad lines at all. And this also strengthens our metal lines. In this case, this will be a plastic one, a heavy-duty PVC and it won't, it won't do anything to plastic, but it doesn't harm. One thing that I did learn last week, if you guys would consider, and I don't know the whole history behind it, but I guess years ago, the city gave the school a water well that's back somewhere in the sports complex. And it might not even, it might be under the new fields and so we can't even get to it. And we had to turn it down, turn it off and cap it because of DEQ rules. But that water well is a direct source to water. If you were to put a fire hydrant on there, or if you were to put a fire department quick connect on there, that would give the fire department a lot of water that we wouldn't, that wouldn't be going through the school once if you was, water straight from the ground and they could take that water. They have hose to get to here, hose to get to the elementary school. And DEQ doesn't care if we put raw water on a, on a fire. The problem was initially that raw water, we would turn it on and putting it in our pipes and that's how we were giving fire hydrants. And that would mix with the, that would mix with the RO water and it'd get bad water because it's untreated water. And that's why we had to shut it off initially. And I don't know where, exactly where it is out there and I don't even know if you could get to it. Do you know where it is?
Yes, it's in the hunk house and we reconstructed that basically and now all of our sprinkler system is on it, out of the complex.
But if you had a fire department, I mean, I don't know if that's possible, if you put a fire department.
I'm sure we've done that.
Fire department could tap right into it and that would be another source of water that would help us, help you if that ever, if you ever got to do it. And we have another raw water well that we have done the same thing to the city has where we have it, where the fire department could hook up and fill up. So if we run out of water in town, the fire department still has, still has access to fill up the tank.
I don't know if a phone, a phone suppressant system would be qualified as a, a rural sprinkler system. I've seen them before.
I think going round and round with NODA and if there's one portion of the building, portion of the building that doesn't have the sprinkler system, the entire building has to get raided as not having the sprinkler system. And so that, that increases that whole thing. And I understand that's a crazy cost and I don't know if you guys can ever even go to that. I'm just saying, we're doing the best we can to get you the most water we can get you. I don't think we'll ever be able to get you to 3,000, but by fixing water lines, I can get you to 1,500, 1,600 in about a five-year period out there. And so that, we'll meet that, that requirement.
Thanks, man. Any other new business?
No. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
Did you say it was raw water? It was raw water. So it's wells, it's drilled wells.
Yeah, we can't use it for anything in our district except for watering the grass.
And nobody really knows how deep those wells are. I mean, on that side of them, they're not deep, they're 3,500, 4,000 feet deep. I don't know if it would be here.
I think that all the wells in Cherokee are around 4,000.
I think it would be worth testing, see how many GBM you have per minute because.
We have a flow meter that works on, I don't know how it would work out there. Maybe we can, Cedar Ridge something up, but it's an attachment to go on a fire hydrant. We can, we can, we can test the gallons per minute. But any additional water if there's a fire will help us.
All right. Yeah, you can, you can drill them out for 3,500, 4,000 dollars. I'm guessing what you're talking about, putting in lines and, if you've got the water underneath you, it's, it's not too expensive to get it.
If you do that, I would, I would just free flow it into a tank for a minute and then put that meter on there because those meters, you just straight flow it out there.
Clint had, I bought the fire department this little test meter two months ago and, you know, with your permission, we could come and look at it and test it. And see if we can, I don't know if we're going to have to build something to adapt to what we currently have and, you know, use this, I'm not sure what infrastructure we have out there. Do that water well, if we could tap into that water well, it would help us a lot.
When we put the complex up, that well was not functioning. And so we did, we put a new lift station on it and did whatever we needed to be able to draw from it for the, so if you guys want to come out and look at it, go right ahead because it serves the purposes that we need, but I'm not just sure that.
I don't know if the pump that's on there currently is going to be enough. The well is active, but, and I'm not asking you guys to do it, I'm just, I didn't know if you were aware of that, that we could have, as many sources of water we can have, it would be better.
Anything else?
No, no, unless there's any questions.
No questions? Number 10, have a motion. Has there been a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Judy?
Locum?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.